Let us pray. Wise and loving Creator God, first, let me say thank you. Thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many abundant blessings. And thank you for the life that you've given to us and for the measure of hope that you give us. So we can fulfill our callings. The gifts that you give us for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you also, Lord, for the ability to be involved in the useful work of our community. And for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for the freedom to embrace you and the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us, even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. Tonight, Lord, I pray for those who love and serve this city. That we are blessed to share. Give this commission the necessary wisdom tonight to govern according to your will. Give the commissioners the awareness to do what's right for the people who voted for them. As well for those who didn't. Whether those both were among those who were wealthy, among middle class or the poor. I ask for your blessings on the agendas before them this evening. So that they may know that they are doing your will. And ever deciding. Matter that comes before them. I pray all of this in Jesus's name with the abiding comfort of your holy Spirit.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
If you need to add more an action item, then it would be for electrical infrastructure for the St. Joseph subdivision.
Motion to approve the agenda?
I submit. As amended, second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hatch, seconded by Commissioner Wentz to approve the agenda. Any, moving on to public comments?
We have to vote.
Sorry.
We have to vote.
I'm sorry about, sorry, first time. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, fine. Okay, now, public comments. Do you have any online? This is the time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you come to the podium and state your name and address, speak respectfully, and limit your comments to three minutes. The public comments. Moving on to action agenda. Minutes of the February twenty first, twenty twenty four meeting. I move to approve the minutes of the February twenty first, twenty twenty four meeting.
Second.
Any further comments? We have a motion. To approve the minutes of the February twenty first, twenty twenty four meeting. By Commissioner Hutchinson, seconded by Commissioner Wentz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Same sign. Okay, moving on to appropriation ordinance number four.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number four. Second.
We have a motion to approve ordinance number four by Commissioner Wentz, seconded by Commissioner Hatch. Any further comments? Or any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the demo program application for nineteen fifteen Broadway.
Mayor Commissioners, as you know, David, excuse me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk down today. David Sprague is applying to have three of the trailers up there removed under the demo program. And you've got the two bids there and, you know, the, if the program allows for up to. Half, up to forty thousand dollars, so. He's got a bid from. Dalton Snyder. To do the three, we're just talking about three, Dalton did give him a, a deal on the double wide, but he's got two trailer, three more trailers left if these get approved. Two of them have got interest to move off a lot because they are. Way, a little bit of TLC and they might make somebody a nice home, two of them, and just double wide the one of them. So anyway, and then he's taken one down himself and that's almost down. He might clean it up a lot, I imagine, this spring, summer, we're gonna start seeing a lot of changes up there. I need to get a site plan, he's asked for some information. He's got some people looking at his, to build a storm shelter and these. Bathrooms and stuff, so. Anyway, you have my memos, I recommend you accept them, these into the demo program. For the three trailer houses.
So in the demo program, it's just gonna be the two, correct?
Three. Three, three trailer houses.
Okay, there's quotes for two.
No, there's, there's, the, the quote is. If you look at the second quote on. On precision excavation, it says five thousand dollars on each times three. But that's, and then if you look at Dalton's, the demolition of regular trailer house, three thousand dollars, that's times three, so. He's giving, whatever, however many he wants to tear down, he's gonna charge it three thousand dollars, but the double, that's gonna cost him that, so basically. Dalton's bid is nine thousand dollars for three trailer.
Thank you for the.
So I'm sorry, I should've. I guess I should've made Dalton put times three on there. But I think at the time when Dalton put this in. David wasn't sure. And I think when he, by the time David submitted, which was last week, the application, he had more positive feeling about. One, at least one of those going away for somebody else to haul it away, so, which would save everybody. Now, whether he comes back and asks for, technically, but I went back and reread our demo program policy and technically, he could've put each. One of these individually on the demo program policy and he could've got more money out of it. And I told him, I didn't know how far the commissioner would be willing to go on that, so he might want to package him or something, so. It's kind of what he, and he's kind of doing it to his schedule too, and what he thinks might work or might not. He's the type of guy, I think, that's got some patience on. If somebody's interested in moving one off, he may. He may wait that out to its maximum point before he decides, okay, I gotta get rid of it now, get, get it out of there, so.
Just help me enter, we're not allowed to build anything on those properties for five years either, or is not, right?
No, 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 that's under some grant program or something.
Okay.
No, 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 this is under our demo demolition program policy.
Okay. And then.
And it's just basically a reimbursement policy to the owner.
Okay, so Dalton too, we're waiting on Dalton to complete some projects.
I, I bug him about the hen.
Okay, so what, was.
Again, I was told that he was gonna start that house before the end of February.
Yeah.
And here we're not, and now. If I. Last six months, every project I've dealt with is. Late, starting late, can't get equipment, can't get engineering. Projects are waiting on contractors, you know.
So did he give you a timeline that I?
Well, if he gets this, I'm gonna call him tomorrow and say, I hope you're coming to get both these all ones. And, and soon, because the commissioners threatening to send me down the road if I don't get these. I tried to make it sound greasy, I tried to make it sound like I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get punished if this thing happens. They only pushed them so, so far, you know, I mean. I don't know what the answer is, sort of. Bonding, but even our policy says that if you're approved, you have to apply for a demo improvement within so many days, but then if you, once you apply for demo, you got another thirty days to actually start demolitions, so. You know, it could stretch out for quite a while and, and you know, some other projects we've had went six months past what we thought. Was gonna happen, that's just because they picked up another job where they're gonna make more money building terraces for a farmer, you know. So they're gonna put this job off until they get that done, and that happened to us in the past too, so unless we. And if we start requiring them to be, you know, put up a bond or something, or if we start going, you know, it might, it might, we, we get very few. People that enjoy doing that and bid on it and give us reasonable prices, so I would hate to put a detriment on that even though. Not my contracts are listed that big, but very few of them ever bid.
The, the two that are. Inhabitable. Are, are going to be moved or done regardless.
They've got to be, if he wants to build, what he wants to build with the travel trailer car, they'll have to be moved at some point.
Okay, so they won't, when you say at some point? No idea necessarily when that would be, or would that be? Kind of along with all of this project, you know, are, are people living in those now currently?
No, no, they're all, everyone of them's empty, everyone of them's empty. And I don't know, I've been on Facebook or anything, but I know that. He told me that he wanted to, a little while to decide on the other two, because he actually thought that he might be getting them gone for no cost to anybody.
And you've already shared with him that he can't move them elsewhere in the city?
Yes, I told him, he said, I tell everybody that, and he said they just turn around, so I've got one of them just turned around last because. Apparently, they wanna put them in down somewhere. But when he told them that, I wouldn't accept it anymore, they don't need our, our remove, or our relocation move for trailer houses.
I move to accept the three trailer houses at nineteen fifteen Broadway under the demo program and authorize the city manager to sign the contract with the owner based on the lowest bid of nine thousand dollars from Dalton Derberks.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, seconded by Commissioner Wentz to approve. The demolition of three trailer houses at nineteen fifteen Broadway into the demo program and authorize the city manager to sign the contract. With the owner based on the lowest bid of nine thousand dollars from Dalton Derberks. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
We'll do the electrical infrastructure for St. Joseph's subdivision then.
Yes, I sent a memo ahead of you and I apologize for the lateness of it. A variety of reasons why it just didn't get done sooner than this. So back in December, we, the city commission issue temporary notes and approved a bit of its part of construction to build the public infrastructure at the St. Joseph's subdivision, went up there this afternoon, it's progressing really well, it's a ponca toy paradise up there right now, it's really fun to watch, so. If you need pictures for young kids or something, that'd be really good to show right now. Anyway, then in February, we learned of an additional cost to be incurred for the electrical service, so Prairieland requires their developers of any area extension to provide a deposit upfront that will, it's equivalent to the cost of putting the infrastructure on the ground. And then developers are eligible for reimbursement of up to three thousand dollars per home that is connected within the next five years. For this project, that's estimated at around forty eight thousand dollars. When we designed this subdivision, it was designed to have underground electric service to all the lots. But we did not include that as a flat covenant, so we're not bound to that, it's just whether it was designed. The estimate that we got to install the underground electrical service was a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty one dollars. The cost to provide overhead electrical service is fifty five thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, so since that February fifteenth, when we got that initial estimate of a hundred and thirty nine. Been working with Prairieland Electric Cooperative staff, we'll see if there's any way that we can reduce those costs, and some of the options that we discussed. Were the option for going to overhead electrical service, which is what else, what is occurring elsewhere throughout towns. For this subdivision, we wanted to do something a little bit more modern compared to what other. Similar to what other communities are doing, which is going with the underground electric service. We also are asking Vos Parva for costs to trench and install the conduit themselves as opposed to having Prairieland Electric do it, thinking that maybe they have. Some of the skilled labor, they might have some of the equipment, and so maybe that could reduce the cost, we don't yet have that cost estimate from them for that. We've also asked Prairieland Electric to have their board consider refunding that deposit in full and upfront. Their board doesn't meet until March twenty sixth, so we won't know if they'll honor that special request until that, that point in time. And we've, they have an option to use a line extension contract through Prairieland Electric, it's a financing of over five years, but it has a little over seven and a half, or seven percent interest rate at this point in time, and I'm not sure the cities are eligible to do that kind of financing, so I still need to do some research on that. I know we can't go out and get regular commercial loans, but I'm not sure about this. And the project is not eligible for Prairieland Electric's revolving loan fund, they do have one that's eligible for some community development projects, but this is not one where it would be eligible, so those are the options that we've considered so far. And have visited with, with the staff, including the CEO, and. He has done a good job of explaining to me how their costs have increased over the last several years, mentioned that even. Had we done this project two years ago, it probably would've been closer to half this amount because of the cost of the electrical components and transformers and how much they've moved these. Explaining kind of where their costs come in, their margins, that kind of thing, and so I understand that there's really not a lot of wiggle room outside of their policy, probably our best bet with them to reduce the cost is to ask for that rebate upfront. With the three thousand dollars per home, the forty eight thousand dollars estimated here. As I mentioned, Vos Parva is progressing very quickly with their grading, they anticipate that the utility construction is gonna begin within the next two weeks, we'll start to see materials lay, lay down there within the next week. They're gonna start with water and sewer construction, as that progresses, then they'll soon be ready for electrical installation, so we'll need to make a decision fairly soon, like within the next week or so, if we're gonna go underground or overhead. So that they can get the right materials coming and to plan for, for their labor on, on this project. This is an unplanned expense, since I know it's a lot of information that goes forth to you and ask you to make a decision right now, I'm just concerned about delaying of the project and having them. Worry about Vos Parva not having enough work to do continuity, but they also understand, talking with that super, then talking with Jason Johnson, they understand that this is a big decision for you guys to have to make an unplanned decision as well. So we have some options to cover the upfront expense. One option would be to move a CIP allocation for a mill and overlay of Archer from twelfth to eighteenth into the special highway fund. Right now in the CIP, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated for that. The special highway fund balance at the end of the year last year was two hundred and thirty six thousand dollars, so those, those funds are available that could be used for that. We'd also discussed. Putting the twentieth street extension cost to that, to that fund as well, to be able to use those to preserve CIP funds. Another option would be to fund this electrical infrastructure from reserves, which I'm, I'm not excited about doing, we've already put to reserves a couple of other major projects here within the last year. One of those was the demolition of the building at eight thirty West eleventh, and that was in two hundred and seven thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. And another was just the overage from bid from Vos Parva that we hadn't budgeted for, and that was another ninety five thousand two hundred and ten dollars, so I'm really not excited about dipping into reserves again this year for a project. There are some options to try to recover some of the expense, so even after we spend it upfront, know that cities can only, bound by Kansas cash basis law, so we've gotta have the cash upfront to be able to spend it. And so, but we could recover it in a couple of different ways, one would be to, one way would be to assign a special assessment to each lot, again, not excited about that, because one of our. Advertisements or intentions of this project is to provide homes that are affordable for moderate income earners, and we had intended for this to be special assessment free, no special assessments to these lots, that's why we started the old housing incentive district. Another option would be to roll this expense into the bonds that are issued after the completion of the infrastructure project. So recall that from public infrastructure, we issued temporary notes, and that gave us flexibility in case the bids came in differently than what we had planned for them, and then that way we could. Only bond the actual amount that we really needed when we rolled those over at completion. So we could include that. What we know about the RHID is that going into it based on the estimated value of our homes at that time. The six-year build out and the cost of the infrastructure at that time, we know that the RHID wasn't planned to fully cover the whole thing, and the city at large is gonna have to cover about three hundred thousand dollars of that. Which we had planned for, because we had debt service that had dropped off recently, and we held on to that for capacity for this project, and that way we could do that without raising. Without raising property taxes for our, our tax base, so it's still coverable, but we could roll that in to recover that expense over time, again, that's a, those bonds are intended to be a twenty five year bond to match the RHID, so it would recover over twenty. So if you do the math, the hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars for the underground infrastructure, if you pull up a forty eight thousand dollars of a refund, whether it happens upfront or whether it happens on the backside as homes are filled out. Then that's a net cost to the city of, of a little under a hundred thousand dollars, so about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. If we do the overhead power, which is fifty five thousand, you still get that forty eight thousand dollar refund, and so the net to the city is about seventy five hundred, and that's a little easier for us to swallow. Net. It does a creepy aesthetic that we want up there, but it, it is an option, so I guess I'd ask for your conversation, your discussion, feedback, what do you think?
What, what kind of, uh? Electricals on the Lost Creek area, isn't that just, oh, is that underground or up front? I think, is it under, I don't know. I, I honestly did not even look up there, I don't know, do you guys, can you guys think of it up here? Is it, it's all underground? No, I don't like the idea of not knowing what they're, you know, what they're going to offer yet, you know what I mean? It, it's hard to plan based on a lot of maybes.
You mean the forty eight thousand?
Right, yeah. I mean, we, we know we'll get it back, yeah, but if we over time or it could be up for it.
So much bonding capacity, if we rule this into bond, what's our, what would be the remaining bonding capacity, do you know?
That, I'm not sure, we, we would have to go back and calculate that, I don't know if we. Calculated that before this meeting.
Well, and actually, we. If we don't get that forty eight thousand back right away. We're paying the interest on it.
For the bonds.
So it's, the regular cost is four. And a hundred and thirty nine.
I guess. Another question that I have is this hundred and thirty nine to seventy one, that's just for the underground?
Yeah.
Okay, but, so even if, if the other, the company that's doing it, or Vos Parva does the. The trenching and stuff, then, I mean, we don't know what that cost is, but you still have to buy transformers and con, you know, all the conduit and electrical. And that was the reason that he gave you that these prices went up so much?
Yeah, yeah, the transformers are still there, yeah, the poles are still there, so. The transformers that they're buying for the underground are gonna be ground mount transformers, but once they be buying from the poles will be overhead, and those are less expensive than the ground mount transformers. You're right about the conduit piece, if we parcel the, like, the bid from Vos Parva, that's only personally not a portion of the hundred and thirty nine thousand, it's not the whole thing, so there's a chance we could save maybe ten thousand dollars off of that, but it wouldn't be the whole thing. And that value is, I don't know if I should say that, I'm not allowed, but it, it was a portion of this, so, wait and see what they come up with.
I guess, I guess on a project the size of this, it's gonna be an amount of less than a hundred thousand dollars, right?
Net, yes.
Net, in the end, and really, if that's, if that's the big surprise, then. It, that's the big surprise.
Let's hope that that's the only big surprise.
Agreed, yeah, it's just, you know, aesthetically for that neighborhood, it's harder to go back and do that later, and it would kind of, it would, if it matches. The connecting neighborhood, I think we should stay there.
The amount of when we get, obviously, it's ideal, it's less ideal for anyone that has to dig underground, but it's definitely more aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah, that, that is an advantage, is the wind may not knock out as much power, you wouldn't have lines freezing as much, that doesn't get, that we're getting more intense storms during the winter as well. And of course, that depends on what's upstream from that power, but.
Remind me how much the twenty first street extension, the twentieth street extension is, in terms? Or, what, I mean, I know it was much more in the.
We had budgeted fifty six thousand for that.
And it came in, do you guys remember, was it a hundred?
Hundred forty.
Hundred forty.
And there's still, let's see, Jason plans to bring that to you on March twentieth, the next meeting. He's been negotiating with several contractors to try to see if we can get the price down on that.
So we also don't necessarily know what that's going to be. But with the. Moving the CIP allocation just for the overlay for Archer from twelfth to eighteen. So then that would be paid for out of the special highway fund instead of CIP. And then we can potentially use that amount. Which is around a hundred and fifty, or not, it would be less than that, but.
That's the most. The most attractive option, me, is to push hard for the forty eight thousand upfront. And to utilize the, the CIP allocation for the overlay, as long as we're still able to do the overlay using the special highway.
Yeah. I agree. I think it should be noted that none of the other private utilities are asking for an upfront investment, they are incurring their costs for their capital investment, they do expect to recuperate it in ways that their policy allows, so they expect to have. The meters connected and eventually recuperate from that, that amount, I know that Cunningham is gonna piggyback on the trenches of Prairieland, and so that's how, how they try to keep their costs down too. So those, those are some ways that they're, that they're trying to keep, keep costs down for the project as well. I do know that Prairieland does, and talking with, with their CEO, they do recognize the value of this project, they do appreciate the approach that we're taking and trying to keep it affordable. I think one of the things that they recognize too is that would, because they're a co-op and they cover large region, whatever they do for us, they wanna be able to replicate in other communities that are also trying to address housing shortages as well, so I think that's.
Well, I would make a motion to move the CIP allocation for mill and overlay of Archer from twelfth to eighteenth street to the special highway fund and reallocate this CIP, now it's the electrical infrastructure at St. Joseph's subdivision, and. I guess that would be. The only motion at this time.
Okay, to do what now?
To do the CIP. To move the CIP allocation for mill and overlay. Of Archer from twelfth to eighteen, that top option A.
Okay.
And then, I guess, we have some time to consider. The options below. I mean, we'd have some time to consider the bonding portion, correct?
Yes, yeah, we, we don't have to decide.
But we don't need to make a motion on that.
Correct, yeah, it'd just be to authorize us to be able to, to do the expense, you guys tell us if you wanna go underground or overhead, okay? So can you repeat your motion one more time, please?
Sure, I move this, I. Make a motion to move the CIP allocation for mill and overlay of Archer from twelfth to eighteenth street to the special highway fund and reallocate the CIP amount for the electrical infrastructure at St. Joseph's subdivision.
And do you want to make, including your motion, whether we go for underground or overhead electrical?
I make my motion for underground.
Second.
And we have a motion by. Commissioner Hutchinson, seconded by Commissioner Hatch. To move the CIP allocation for mill and overlay of Archer from twelfth to eighteenth street to the special highway fund and reallocate the CIP amount. For the underground electrical infrastructure at St. Joseph's subdivision. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to manager report.
As I said, before progress, we take this subdivision is being made very well, their fishing ratings should start utilities this next week, which is. I've decided before progress, we take this subdivision is being made, um, very well, they're finishing grading, should start utilities this next week, which is great. Uh, demolition of eight thirty west eleven is progressing, um, very slowly, but they are, they are progressing, so work that's happening out there today. They still anticipate a few more weeks before they're done, we do have good communication going between us and that contractor, as well as with votes parter and Invalin Johnson to make sure that we're not gonna get into a point where we impede each other. Um, if, if that happens, if at that point in time, we'll address it at that time, but we're trying to stay ahead with that communication to make sure that we don't run into delays there. Uh, today, Nantourism Partners met in a large discussion about preparing for bike class Kansas in June, again, we'd have, except about eight hundred riders here on, on June twelfth. So some welcome activities, some community preparation activities are planned, um, and even some events and things for, for when they come, so we're pretty excited about that. Um, another thing I wanna visit with you about was that the car wash project is also progressing, we received a request from their contractor to place their storage unit in the undeveloped right of way of East twentieth street. So if you recall, we agreed to do a short extension so that they could access from the highway into their parking lot. But the twentieth street right of way actually extends beyond that into the hill, so they wanna be able to place their, their job trailer, their storage unit there. Um, they plan to place that, those items by the end of this month, as I shared with them, that's a private use in a public right of way, so it does require a license agreement. So we did get one drafted, but because it was only requested this week, and because the integrity server was down today, so we couldn't access the GIS that showed the parcel lines, we don't have that ready for your consideration tonight. Um, wanted to get initial feedback from you, do you have any questions or concerns about that that we can work through, then we'll bring that back to you on, on March twentieth for a formal consideration. Any questions or concerns about them using that undeveloped right of way adjacent to their property for a lay down area, storage of materials and equipment and job trailer?
Just, and it is temporary.
Temporarily, yes, they, they anticipate being done by, in, in September of this year.
And it won't impede the development of that street extension?
We'll have to do some coordination there, so that, that was a part, part of the discussion is, how can we make sure that that street extension happens? Because what we don't wanna have happen is for the car wash opening to be delayed, because we need to, to get the street work done. I do know that VHS does intend to give us a proposal for them to also be that twentieth street, so that, that may be a considering factor, but we'll just have to work with them on it.
And there's no other reason that that stuff would be in the way of anything other than for the development of the street.
Right, 'cause there's a, there's a hill to the east, there's a hill and undeveloped property to the south with no other access to other properties there, so the only access is, is for this property. Okay, then we'll, we'll, we'll continue to work on that and then bring that for your formal consideration next time. And that's all that I have, unless you have any questions.
Jack report? Your share of comment? Would you have anything?
I do, I've had a couple reports of dog bites, um, is there, can we get an update on our dog bite report? And then perhaps put out a reminder to people not, I know it's getting nice out, but people riding their bikes, that people walking, it's just very unfortunate, we live in such a nice town. And you can get attacked by a dog at any point in time.
We can do that, and then, um, e- either now or after the meeting, if you wanna share with us kind of where you see those, that would be helpful, yes.
We, we prosecute all the ones that come in, the problem is sometimes we don't know, so I'm saying, actually, we've really ramped up having to take dogs from folks.
Yeah, maybe it's just more of a public service announcement now that snakes out, um, people shouldn't have to worry about that.
No, they shouldn't, but, so we do, yeah, I mean, we've been doing there's a lot in municipal court right now, so.
Okay, yeah.
And we can push that on our website as well.
Thank you, that would be great.
Um, is there any update on the meals on wheels or the, I have not been able to make conversation on that lately?
No, no progress.
Myology. Okay.
You need to tell Chuck that we had a very short meeting, because you are such a great
That's right.
I knew that the issue, second.
Yes, we have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Hash, second by Commissioner Wentz, all in favor? All opposed, same sign?